Welcome everyone to our January 25th, 2021 Committee of the Whole Meeting. And before we go any further, I would like to ask legislator Dwight Fenton, he would recite the Pledge of Allegiance for us today. Legislator Fenton?
Thank you. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States. To God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, legislator Fenton.
I apologize. Mr. Barnes?
I am present.
Thank you. Mrs. Burdick?
Here.
Mr. Crandall?
Here.
Mr. Curran?
Here.
Mr. Decker?
Here.
Mr. Dibble? Mr. Fanton?
Here.
Mr. Graves?
Here.
Mr. Harris?
Here.
Mr. Havy?
Here.
Mr. Healy?
Here.
Mrs. Hopkins?
Yes, here.
Mr. Ricky?
Here.
Mrs. Ruth?
Here.
Mr. Stocken? Fifteen legislators are present.
If this audit had been, has been distributed, and we need a motion to move that forward.
So moved.
A little second. And I believe that that was legislator Decker that made the motion. And legislator Havy seconds that discussion. All in favor of this moving to the full board, say aye.
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 Are there any opposed? Motion is carried. Next, we have a couple of items to address under Brenda Really, Clerk of the Board. And I believe that I'll turn this portion over to Brenda to lead us through them. Brenda?
The first item is I'm requesting a resolution accepting a check in the amount of $240.95 from NYMER. This represents the cost less a $500 deductible to repair a 2009 Chevy Impala. It was damaged on December 29th, and it's assigned to the Community Services Office.
Stocken moves.
And second.
Motion is made by legislator Stocken and by legislator Fenton. Discussion. All in favor of this, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion is carried.
The next item on the agenda is the, our annual renewal. It was a proposal by Richardson and Stout and Evans Agency from NYMER, and it's for the period February 1st, 2021 to February 21st, 2022.
Moved by Decker.
Motion made by legislator Curran, seconded by legislator Decker. Discussion, and I think before we, before we open it up to the legislators for discussion, if we could, and I'll defer to the, to the clerk on this, but I believe that Rich Uhl was on to maybe highlight some changes or differences or point anything out that's, that we should know about before we open it up for regular discussion.
Yes. Rich, is there anything that you would like to point out before people start asking questions?
I don't really, I don't really think so. I'll just tell you that I'm on there twice as you see me on the screen twice, because I don't have technology. I have to use my cellphone for my camera and my speaking, and the, and then I'm using my computer so I can see your presentation and so on. So that's why I'm on there twice. But I tried to put as much information as I could in the document I sent. I know it's a ton of information, and I don't want to, you know, read it all to you. So if anybody has any questions, I, I'd love to answer them.
That was excellent. Thank you for sending it over.
Questions, comments from the legislators?
This is Rick.
Oh, yes. Well, legislator Ricky?
Yeah, I just have a question. I fully intend to support this, but on the line of healthcare professional liability, I see there's no deductible on there where I see deductibles on a lot of other lines. Is there a reason for that?
That's just how NYMER writes it. Your auto, your auto liability, general liability, law enforcement liability, and public officials liability are written on a self-insured retention with a $250,000 per claim retention or deductible. You think of it as a deductible, but the healthcare does not carry that kind of deductible.
So there's not one offered, you're saying?
I'm not sure, I'm not sure if we could offer you one, but, you know, I could check that out, John, for sure.
Okay, no big deal. I just, when I go through my insurance, I always, you know, up my deductibles, my premium down. That was just the, because I do it on my own.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
I'll get back to, yeah, and I'll get back to Brenda on that answer, too.
Any other question? Comments?
Yeah, this is legislator Havy. I just wanted to tell Rich that I appreciate the backup information he provided. I did have some questions, and going through the material that was provided, answered them, I believe. So I appreciate the backup. That was very helpful.
Okay, thank you.
Further discussion?
This is legislator Harris.
Yes.
Hey, Rich. Just wondering if you have any recollection of recent history as far as what our premium increases have been averaging year to year?
I think, you know, there are two parts to this, Brooke. There are, there's the, the straight rate that changes from year to year. And for many years, NYMER doesn't, years, year to year, they won't even change the rate, unlike most insurance companies. Lately, their rates have been going up, but I'll tell you, they've been going up less than other municipal insurers. This year, commercial insurance is really, we're really seeing it harden up for businesses and municipalities, you know, public entities and businesses, and even personal insurance. So I'm just trying to think the best way to give you this answer. A lot of years, it's been flat, and some years, there's been rate decreases. And then there are increases and decreases by line of coverage, too, from year to year. And NYMER is, I put in there, and it's, they're owned by policyholders, and the board is made up of public officials, and they take this very seriously. And, you know, they're looking at pricing very seriously, and they realize they need to provide as stable a product as possible for their members, which you're a member. You know, last year, there was an increase. Part of it was exposure increase. Again, this year, their, part of this increase is based on exposure as well. But this year is probably the largest rate increase that I remember with NYMER. You know, it was over four, four or five percent, probably, if we blended those all together.
Thanks, Rich. And then just follow up for Terry. Do you know what we budgeted for this?
Sorry about that. I couldn't get my mute button off, but thank you. It, we budgeted, I think, a little less than that, but I think we'll be able to absorb it, okay?
Thank you.
Yep.
I'll just say Brenda did ask me for a forecast. That's probably what Terry used for the forecast. And the, the first thing that I saw from my, from the, I actually received this quote from the underwriting manager from NYMER is that he acknowledged that the, the total was more than he forecasted by about a percent and a half or so. So, and it was based on exposure and also experience rating.
Okay, thanks for that info, Rich.
Anyone else? Do we have Rich?
I actually, I believe, I have to see what was adopted. I see I did request $351,000 this year.
I think that's what was adopted.
Okay. And I think last year, the year before, it was a, a small increase. But last year, I believe, we did experience a, a nine percent increase last year.
Do we pay for that all at once, or do we pay payments throughout the year?
We usually pay the entire thing upfront.
We were able to get, I'm glad you asked that. I should have, I didn't even put that in my presentation. I saw on regional news that you've asked your department heads to hold off spending until April. And so I, I exported that article to the president of NYMER, and she said that she feels like she could wait until, for that, like NYMER would be willing to wait for their annual payment until April if you wanted to take advantage of that this year.
That or 15% discount cash upfront doesn't sound bad either.
I can ask, but I don't think.
Thank you, Rich.
Rich, thank you for the, the work you've done on this and putting it together and answering our questions both upfront and now. NYMER and, and the, for what we're looking for coverage, this is still the, the best game in town for us.
Hey, Bill.
I, I, if that's, you asked, if that's, if, if they are the best program, I really strongly believe they are. And I, I put in my presentation, we even had one of our accounts go out to bid for February, and the other municipal, there's a limited number of companies that write municipalities, ensure municipalities, and once they, you know, they looked at the NYMER coverages and pricing, the municipality wasn't able to get any other quotes. So, I mean, I really, they, they write 930 municipalities in the state, counties, cities, towns, villages, and, you know, the only way to write that many is to be good year after year after year in every way, premium and claims and service and loss control. They come into the county and, and do, not during COVID, obviously, but, you know, they'll, they'll typically run some training seminars that are free of charge for county employees, but all the other municipal employees as well. And no other company, municipal or otherwise, other than Utica for Schools does anything like that.
Yeah. This is Fan. I have a question. Maybe for Rich or Brenda. If you could total what we have actually experienced in claims versus what we're paying out, it would be an interesting number to take a look at, just for this last year.
I can circulate something together and email it out to you.
Okay, thank you.
What I can say personally, I'm responsible for about $12,000, but I don't know about everybody else.
I notice you're on a first-name basis with Rich.
Well, I, this is Judy, and I think now that Mr. Harris has taken the defensive driving class, he won't be so costly here in County. Thank you, Rich.
Okay, thank you all very much.
Anyone further before we vote on this?
Rich, Gary Barnes. Just a quick question. Under crime, we have $100,000 for employee dishonesty. If you have a, a payment because of a employee embezzling, can you, do you go back to the employee and try to get back whatever you have to pay out?
We've had some large and small employee dishonesty claims since I've been selling insurance. The largest one was a couple hundred thousand dollars over about 20 years. And there's, I mean, maybe the judge might, you know, require restitution, but I don't know if it really ever comes in. And if it does, you know, it might be over a period of a long, long time, and you may not, you know, you may never get it. But I've never seen anybody just write a check unless it was to get out of, you know, if they got caught stealing money, right? Yeah, yeah.
And Rich, those.
So, but it, it can happen.
Those claims you were just explaining were claims against this client, correct?
No. No, 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 no. Should have clarified that.
Well, I thought it might be good.
No.
I ask that question simply because every once in a while, you read about a town clerk or scouting with some money and fire districts and so on and so forth. And I know that there's some penalties, but usually I think that they, as I understand it, they get along, get away with taking $100,000, and it doesn't cost them all that much in the long run, other than maybe a year in jail. I don't know.
Right, right.
So, Gary, what are you saying? You think crime pays then?
We ready for the question? Anything more for Rich? Will voice vote this? This will go to the, to the full board for resolution? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? And it is carried. Thank you.
Thank you very much, everybody. And it's, we consider it a privilege to insure Allegheny County, and we really enjoy it. And I'll put a little commercial in for Brenda, which she probably doesn't need. But, I mean, she's just excellent. She reconciles payments and vehicles and equipment and just stays on top of things, really helping us out a lot. So, thank you.
Well, we'll put one in for you, Rich, because we have, we, we've introduced you, but not properly, as being representative of the Evans Agency and Allegheny County and your firm, even though now we know you with a, a new name, go back a long, long ways. So we appreciate the, the job that you do for us and have done for us in the past as well.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Rich.
Thanks.
Brenda, under, anything else under Clerk of the Board that not on the agenda?
No, I have nothing further. Thank you.
Thanks. We'll move on with some recommendations from our position in the Ad-Hoc Committee. And I believe that I'll let our county administrator, Napp, lead us into this. And she has been cheering that Ad-Hoc Committee. Carissa?
Thank you. We have a number of approvals from Ad-Hoc that I'd like to get onto this agenda so that we can move those forward. There is a vacancy in the Real Property Tax Department in an account clerk typist position. This was due to retire. It's budgeted, and so there are no changes to the budget needed, no additional funding required. So we are asking that that request be approved. It's our recommendation for the account clerk typist position.
All right. I think we'll, we'll wander down through these one at a time. So if we could get a motion to move forward with this one.
Maybe you'll note that.
Motion made by Fanton and, did I hear Steve Havy?
You did.
Seconded that. Discussion. When we vote on this, if this is approved, then this will take care of this, the filling of this position, we will not need, or this will not go any further.
That's correct.
Questions, comments from the board?
Legislator Healy here. I have a question here.
Yes.
This is currently vacant?
Correct.
How long has it been vacant?
Um, off the top of my head, I don't know an exact date. I believe it was the end of the year. I don't know if Mr. Buddinger's on here, if he remembers. Either Mr. Buddinger.
Yeah, it was, yeah, it was 12/31, so the end of last year.
Okay. Rich, what's a little, makes it a little hard on your office, especially this time of year, too. I know that. Thank you.
Any other comments, questions? Will vote on this? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried. Continuing on, next, Carissa?
The next one was two requests from the District Attorney's Office. So he was requesting two senior typists is our brand-new positions, and they are not budgeted, so they would need to be created by resolution. The way I took at this question was that we really do feel that these positions are needed for the District Attorney's Office. In filling his attorney positions, the bail requirements, and some of the other. That office particularly hard. They've not had the staff to keep up with it the way they should be keeping up with it. It's put a lot of burden on both the staff and the attorneys. So we do feel that these positions are justified. However, they're not budgeted. There's really not a source of funds for the District Attorney to tap into. They will need to come out of contingency. So we've looked at it, that the recommendation would be, go ahead and create the two positions and give the District Attorney permission to fill one of them now and try to stagger hiring the second one. If he feels that he needs that sooner, he should come back and talk to the Ad-Hoc Committee. And we did have a very nice discussion with his attorney last week, and I feel that he understands that recommendation.
Is there a, an amount that we would be looking to transfer out of contingency at this time? Or are there other funds to carry it for a while?
I think they're fine to carry it for a while, because obviously we're only into January as far as the personnel point ones go. However, it depends on when this position is hired, and we can do a MOE to transfer from contingency at that point in time. So let's see what, when he can hire someone.
It would be dependent on that, and also possibly whether or not that second position would need to be filled, I would assume.
I don't know, Ms. Ross. The, otherwise, as far as budget and Treasury's office go, do we need an immediate transfer from contingency on this one?
We don't. During our discussion with Mr. Slep last week, we're going to advertise that and see what we get in there. He is currently down one attorney, so there's some extra money in his budget now that will carry him until we figure out if he's going to be able to hire two right away or when they're going to be hired. The total annually on this would be about $74,000. So it will be less than that, that will come back to the board and ask to transfer from contingency.
Thank you. So what we're looking for is a, a resolution that would be creating two senior typist positions.
Correct.
And I, maybe to keep things cleaner, we want to have these under separate resolution. One would be just to create these positions. Or do we want wording in there that we would be filling, going ahead, and once those are created, filling one now? And the District Attorney would need to come back for permission to fill the second one?
Um.
Looking for wording, or do we want everything all bundled up into one? Or do you want separate resolutions?
I can't remember off the top of my head. I thought you only needed the resolution to create the positions, and then the committee votes in favor of filling those positions contingent on the resolution. But perhaps I have that wrong. I don't know. Brenda could clarify. Sorry. Um, yes, to create, I believe, would need the resolution.
Not to fill, is that correct?
Correct.
But the permission to fill, we would be voting on that as well.
Right. It is contingent on the resolution.
All right. I'm just trying to make sure we do it in the order we need to and that we take the proper action. So first, I believe, would be, we need a motion to create two senior typist positions in the District Attorney's Office.
Legislator Healy will make it a motion.
Second.
So there's a motion made by legislator Healy, seconded by legislator Dibble, to create two senior typist positions in the District Attorney's Office. Questions, discussion on this?
This is legislator Burdick. I see the original request was dated November. Why weren't these budgeted to begin with? And, I guess that's my question, is why weren't they budgeted to begin with if they were both needed?
I'm not sure I have a good answer for that. I know they had an additional attorney in the office at that time. They had one of their part-time slots filled, and she resigned effective the end of the year. I don't know, you know, she was just hired this summer. If they thought that was going to help their workload, and they weren't going to need any additional staff, and then were surprised by that resignation? I'm not exactly sure. I also know that at least one of these positions is to help with some succession planning, with some in-retirements in the upcoming future of their staff that they might not have been aware of in the fall. But I don't have a good answer. Probably Mr. Slep's the only one that has a solid answer on that.
Carissa, this, this legislator Graves, isn't there also about a six-month backlog in local criminal courts?
There is.
Does that have a play into this?
There is a significant backlog. I know Mr. Slep is very worried about the workload when that backlog, when the logjam actually finally lifts and all that comes forward, and all that work needs to be done as soon as possible. He's very concerned about that. Everything's been out.
Exactly.
With COVID for quite a while.
The reason it wasn't budgeted is we cut out funding for any unnecessary positions for the foreseeable future in order to have a tax reduction. But our, the downside is our foreseeable future was only 30 days.
Legislator Healy, I got a comment here. This is just another unfunded mandate forced upon us by the state of New York because of there are no bail reform and other law enforcement reforms that they have shoved down everybody's throat when they weren't needed, and especially for upstate New York. And I don't suppose there's any funding for any of these from the state. Is that correct?
That's correct. And, you know, we do receive some funding that offsets the District Attorney's salary. We did receive a letter last month saying even that was reduced.
Yeah, that's been reduced quite a bit, too, while they mandate the salary. They've reduced the funding, and they've done that in every department. At one time, they funded most of the probation department. Now that's down a small amount, and just more of the state of New York being out of control and out of touch with the reality of what the real problems are and how, how best to handle them.
We have.
Excuse me if I sound like I'm a little frustrated, but I am. We all are.
We have a motion on the floor to create two senior typist positions in the District Attorney's Office. Any further discussion on, on creating these two positions?
Just a real quick question, Mr. Chairman. This is Brooke Harris. Carissa, so what kind of chunk does this take out of the contingency that we budgeted for new positions?
It all depends on when he fills the positions. Right now, he.
He filled them both right now.
Yeah, it's going to take probably at least a month before we get this, you know, obviously, the next meeting's not till February. We got to create them, and then he's got to advertise, going to advertise right away, interview. I, I don't know, Terry, did you have an estimate of just that one position?
Yeah. It's, well, he, we put in contingency, 100, let me just see. I'm sorry, I'm kind of difficult here to plug through here with just my surface. But we plugged in $100,000 for new positions for 2021. Hoping that, you know, this, these two positions would cost us about 75 for the entire year. Obviously, if he hires them staggered, and we get one in March and one in June, then we're saving a little bit of money. You know, we're talking maybe $50,000, $60,000 that he'll need. He does have some, like I said prior, he has some money in there for an attorney that's not filled right now. So we'll have to see when he gets the ability to hire that attorney as well, how much money is left there to put against these two positions. So right now, I, I would say it's going to be no more than 75. Obviously, that's three quarters of the money that we have put aside for new positions.
Well, so it looks to me like it's 36.6 for salary and 14.6 for fringe. So isn't that 50 per position?
It is, but the fringe, we should be able to absorb that. Fringes come and go as people are hired and leave and take leave and are on.
Um, fringes come and go as people, um, are hired and leave and take leave and are on disability. So, there's a, there's some wiggle room there, so I'm not so worried about the fringe. I'm more worried about the salary itself.
Okay, last quick one. So, the district attorney has his standing approval to fill that vacant attorney's position whenever he can?
Um, Healy had to come forward. Well, you gave him approval to fill the, um, other full-time position. I think last spring. And I don't think he's been able to fill that. And then we created another part-time position there. He was able to fill that. That person just resigned. And no, he has not come forward with a, uh, MOE requesting that, so, yeah.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much.
So, the, uh, the motion on the floor is to create these two senior typist positions. At the moment, this action doesn't cost us anything. We're creating these positions. Ready for the vote? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Motion is carried. Uh, now, we have, uh, now, the next question will cost you money, but we've been through this and, and we're, uh, staggering the filling of this. This would be, um, to fill one of these positions at this time. Uh, correct?
Correct. Correct. And we've asked Mr. Slep to come back, um, if he has a second candidate that looks viable and needs it sooner. And if not, to come back when he thinks he's going to be filling the second one, we can talk about that then, so.
Really. So, this, uh, we need a motion to fill one of these positions that, uh, contingent on it being created. Um, and it will be, the creation of those will, will have a, uh, resolution that goes to the full board, but, uh, seeing we have the full board with us and, and giving an affirmative nod to this, hopefully that'll be taken care of. So, we need a motion to fill one of these.
Root will make the motion to fill.
Motion made by legislator Root.
Second by Havy.
Seconded by legislator Havy to fill one of these positions. Um, roughly in the, uh, thirty-six thousand dollar range or thereabouts. But we are not going to transfer or do anything with the funding at this time. Um, that'll be a separate action to transfer from contingency over into the district attorney's, uh, point ones once we have a little better handle on what this, uh, will cost or if he needs that second position filled. I think that that's reasonably, as I understood it. Discussion on filling this position?
Carissa, this is legislator Decker.
Yeah, legislator Decker.
Any possibility that the, um, reduction in the district attorney's salary, uh, come back to the county to fund these positions, or has it just gone into the black hole that's now Albany?
It went into the black hole, Dave. We'll probably never see it again.
Thank you.
Chairman? Yes, Mr. Budger?
Yes, and you're, in your, uh, when you vote on this, can you vote on the, the salary range? I recommend base to step seven. That way, it's really clear what he can and can't do. Thank you.
Give us the, uh, the step again.
Per- permission to fill from base to step seven.
That's a range from base to step seven?
Correct.
And, uh, Mr. Healy, with your motion to fill this, is that acceptable to you?
So, that's Mrs., uh, Root. I, I thought, that's what I heard her say, but myself, but, uh.
Yes, that's acceptable.
And I believe that, was that Mr. Havy that seconded that?
Yes, it was, and that's acceptable with me as well.
Discussion? We will vote on this. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried. Um, I believe that that'll do it for, uh, the, the district attorney's office at this time with the, uh, thought we may have to come back to fill that other position. And we will be addressing a transfer from contingency in time once we know the figures.
Correct.
All right. Thank you. I guess we're on to the third item.
See, the third item was a request from Mr. Christman to fill a part-time motor vehicle cashier position in the county clerk's office. Uh, we met with Mr. Christman last week as well. He actually had two requests on there. This is the one that the ADHOC committee felt comfortable recommending that we move forward with. Um, this is an additional position, although the position is there, it does not need to be created. It was not, uh, budgeted for, but I believe with some other adjustments, there's sufficient money within Mr. Christman's budget to carry this position. Was that your opinion as well, Ms. Ross?
Yes, that is correct. There's sufficient money to cover this part-time DMV position.
This is the part-time motor vehicle cashier slash examiner position.
Yes, correct.
And, uh, we're, we're looking for permission to fill this. This is created, so we don't need any resolution. It will be taken care of here.
Correct.
Um, could we get a, a motion on the floor for that?
Havy will move that.
Root will second.
Motion by legislator Havy, seconded by legislator Root. Uh, discussion?
This is, uh, this is legislator Healy. This is needed to cover peak, uh, periods during the day. And, uh, at other times, uh, I'm assuming vacations or, or whatever. Is that the purpose of this?
So, Mr. Christman, are you on? Did you want to explain this position at all?
I'm muted. Can you hear me?
There we go.
We can now. Sorry about that. Uh, we're going to be doing a couple of things. First of all, the manager in that facility's been handling two positions. I think this is going to save us a lot of overtime because she's been covering two all but full-time positions. The second thing is we're going to do a rotation program where we're going to put somebody back outside the facility to, uh, start the walk-in appointment program. And, uh, with those two issues and helping with what we call the corner position, this will round us out. And I think it's going to be a major plus.
Uh, thank you. I just wanted a little clarification for the listening public and also for the minutes there. Thank you.
Further discussion?
Well, again, I think you want to make this one base to step seven as well, just the same as we just did for the senior typist positions.
Um, I believe that that motion was made by legislator Havy.
And that's okay. I, I would go with that.
And seconded by legislator Root.
Yep, I'm fine with that too.
Thank you.
Mr. Mr. Chair, that.
Yes, legislator Hopp.
Um, Mr. Shu, yes, this, and this is Hawkins. I want you to just clear, clarify, please. Is this, this position is part-time? Is it part-time permanent or part-time, um, just peak periods? Just, uh, clarify that for me.
Uh, my paper says permanent part-time, but, uh, someone clarify if that's incorrect.
But the position is a competitive position, so once they get through their probationary period, it would be a permanent position, part-time?
Permanent placement with part-time hours.
Thank you.
Further discussion? We will vote on this. Uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion is carried as well. Um, county administrator, Napp, did you have anything further from the ADHOC committee?
No, not at this time.
Thank you. Um, anything under old business? New business? Monkey business?
Perhaps.
The order?
Move your turn.
Miss, I had something, uh, Mr. Chairman, just for the, the members of the board.
Yeah.
Yes, uh, uh, if, if anybody feels the need, uh, to have a caucus at any time, uh, we can, we can make arrangements to do so. Uh, I think everything's been going pretty smoothly, uh, and, but if, uh, the way it has been, and hopefully we'll be back in chambers before long. But, uh, if, if there is a, anybody feels there's any need, uh, or desire to have a caucus by Zoom, we can set something up. So, just let me know and, uh, and we'll, uh, we'll get that, uh, on, on the, uh, dock. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything further before we adjourn? Motion.
Move your turn, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Decker.
My, Mr. Graves, seconded by Mr. Decker. All in favor, say aye.
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 You stand adjourned. Thank you.